Colin, are you still there? Mike, you're sideways. There we go.
On me, we gotta go. You join me in place.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I lay the allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please join me as I pray. Again, Father, we're thankful for the blessings of this day and for your presence in this meeting today. And Lord, we know that we live in a confused world right now, and there are many voices out there that says, follow me. And sometimes those voices are so loud that we can't hear that small voice that's within us. It says that, no, follow me because I know the truth and I know the way. And so, Father, we pray for these commissioners today as they consider the business of this county, that they will listen to that inner voice that tells them that I am the way and the truth and the light. Follow me and I will get you where you need to go and keep you safe. We pray for these commissioners as they consider each agenda item, that they make decisions that benefit all the citizens of this great county, and we just trust you today, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Good morning, everyone. We do have a quorum. And that we have some citizens that want to be heard. Mr. Smith, are you here? Mr. Russo, do you want to talk about item four and five now, or do you want to wait until they come up? Where is she?
Did you hear me?
Now I can, yes.
Okay, I said I can wait until you discuss them, and thank you for getting me a new link so I could sign in.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, because I'm the judge and I can change things around a little bit, and because other people, some people in here have other things to do, I'd just like to change some things and say that I've invited the Mayor of Fulton and the Mayor of Rockport here for a special occasion that we have come up with, and I'd like to start by saying, sometimes in the future, I hope to work with you again, Mayor Kendrick. You're a good man, and we're here to honor you and say thank you. Tracy, would you stand up and read the proclamation?
This is proclamation P-04-2020. Whereas Mayor Jimmy Kendrick has been a resident of Aransas County in Fulton for 15 years, and whereas Mayor Jimmy Kendrick was appointed Mayor of Fulton in July 2011 and elected in 2012 with three more consecutive terms, and served the citizens of the town of Fulton and Aransas County selflessly for over nine years. And whereas, under the governance of Mayor Jimmy Kendrick, the town of Fulton became a highly sought-after tourist destination. And whereas, on the 25th day of August 2017, Hurricane Harvey made landfall in Aransas County, the city of Rockport, and the town of Fulton. During this disastrous time, Mayor Jimmy Kendrick remained at the Aransas County EOC and showed his personal commitment, leadership, and guidance to the community of Aransas County. And whereas Mayor Jimmy Kendrick led a swift community recovery from Hurricane Harvey in the town of Fulton and led the rebuilding and reopening of the iconic Paws and Taws Event Center on February 8, 2020. And whereas, in the year of 2020, the entire world was presented with a COVID-19 pandemic unprecedented in modern history. A state of disaster was declared in the state of Texas and Aransas County. Mayor Jimmy Kendrick worked to great lengths to help stabilize public welfare and protection in the town of Fulton and Aransas County. Now, therefore, we, the Aransas County Commissioners Court, wish to recognize, acknowledge, and profusely thank Town of Fulton Mayor Jimmy Kendrick, an outstanding public servant.
These two guys back cleaning up with each other for the last three years, for the last six or seven months. We've made some horrible decisions, some good decisions, horrible, in fact, even at night. I think the best decisions for the county and the town of Fulton, the city of Austin. And then, you know, thank you for everything you've done. I go next.
Well, now, I'll say that I know this, I feel really in any kind of way. There's people that don't want any, but this CJ being here, because all four of us, it differs. We're all on the same, keeping each other sane. That's been hard, trying to keep the same good. You know, who would ever thought to go through disaster and back to that? Phenomenal, but it's never been done. Those guys that we keep, appreciate it. Appreciate her, it's been helping. Forty-five years, that's a long time. So, thank y'all. Appreciate that, someday we'll cross paths.
Jimmy, I want to thank you. Wish you another better service, yeah. But I always appreciate your guidance, friendship, advice. It's better than different.
He didn't like me in the horse.
He's always been one of those, yeah, he's always been there to take one for the team. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Never set three one a week for one time. My last one, so it's pleasure, it's making it hard, I had nothing to do with what they'll say. Thank y'all, you're a lot of great.
All right. Let's go to a presentation. A presentation from the Road and Bridge, Chris Randall. Chris, come on in. How about right there in that mic and?
Have visuals.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we understand.
I think, okay. You need to stand in front of the mic so you can, they can hear you.
All right, so we're going to talk about the fuel system today for Aransas County. You want to go to the next slide? That's just a kind of an overview picture of, well, of our fuel system. Want to go, okay. And this is a, oh, wait, we skipped a slide. There should be one between that. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Go to the, okay, yeah. So, some, I have some goals I want to accomplish today. I want to talk about the fuel system, explain it so you guys can understand it, because after I left the last time, I realized you guys didn't completely understand what I was asking for, and I want to make sure everybody knows what all is encompassing in our fuel system, and so you guys can understand what we're looking at. Next button. I want to talk about the problems that we have with our fuel system right now, so that you guys can understand how this is actually costing us money. We're, this is something where we're losing money right now because of the current condition of our fuel system. And then, lastly, I want to talk about a, since it's the next, solutions for fixing the problems that we have. All right, and go to the next thing. And this is kind of just a overhead video. It shows the whole fuel. This, this, this thing that we're looking at is the, the gas tank. There's a pump on each end with a holds a little over 10,000 gallons of runs down to the pumps. Coming around to the other side, that, I think, is our diesel tank, holds about 12,000 gallons. And we've got a little right there that's in view in a second, little control head. Back of that, there's another building, there's a breaker, a circuit.
Yeah.
Right up, right up in there, there's a circuit breaker where all the power for that fuel system is located right now, where it all.
All right, you can go to the next slide. Okay, so I want to explain how this works. I'm going to set this.
All right, so we have a two-step verification process that we turn this this way. I can show you guys and talk and be heard. And, all right, we have a two-step verification process we use. Every vehicle has one of these two things, and this goes on where you put the gas. So, where this nozzle goes in, this is attached, and this is basically an ID for the vehicle. So, when you pull up to the pump, this can, tells our fuel system what vehicle you are and what department you're with. So, if it's like my truck number 88, it'll have that information recorded in this. You want to go to the next one? And then, on every fuel nozzle, we have this nozzle ring. This doesn't normally come on a, you know, you don't see these when you go to the gas pump. This is something we attach. When you put the nozzle into the thing, this and this talk to each other until this box right here, I'm okay, you know, and that's when, when it recognizes the vehicle and says, this vehicle is okay to get, to get fuel from this pump. And then go to the next. All right, and then, every, every employee has one of these lovely little key fobs if you get gas, and you stick it on this little deal right there. And once you do that, you can hit the next one. It tells, it tells a, this, this system right here, who the employee is. So, like if John Gutierrez pulls up to get diesel in his truck, he has one of these things, and it says, okay, this is the vehicle that I'm getting, or this is the employee. So, we know who's getting gas, or we know who's getting fuel, what type of fuel they're getting. It records how much, what unit it's going to, and it reports that to a cloud-based server that puts it on my computer and, and auditors and everyone who needs that information. All right. So, this is our picture of just our gas pumps right here. The one on the left is the north pump, the one on the, the right is the south pump, and both of them have one of these boxes next to it. Want to hit the next. So, our system is about 20 years old, it was installed 20 years ago, and it's just gotten really tired, and it's not doing the things that it's supposed to anymore. You can hit the next one. All right, so in December, that is the north gas pump, that control head on it, it's got a out-of-service sign on it because it stopped working. It stopped sending data, and we were trying to find out if, we were going to be able to fix it. The company was closed down for Christmas, and so I had to wait until January, and we found out that the parts to actually make this work. This is the computer that controls the whole thing. This is broke. It's not repairable, and the company that makes this SCI does not make them anymore, they've deemed them obsolete. So, we don't have these available. There's nowhere aftermarket that makes them. I can't get this. So, this fuel pump, pump right here, we went ahead and deactivated it, turned it off because we couldn't get the repair parts. Mike Gordon, before he retired, he had told me, you know, at some point within the next few years, we're going to have to replace the system. So, when that went down, we were planning on just running off of one pump. You want to hit the next slide? And then, in March, the other pump, the other control box broke. It was the exact same problem. It was, I think, actually like the last day in February when that one went out. And so, we, we had to go into a bypass mode, and you want to hit the next button. And so, basically, we have, starting in, in March, we went from having this system to these guys. This is what we're, everything's being recorded on. There's a mailbox between the two fuel pumps where people write down their fuel transactions. Hit the next button. And so, we do not right now have a reliable way to actually track any of the gas for Aransas County. Hit the next. So, one of the things that's happened, Iowa's, let's see which slide. Okay, so these, these guys right here, for me to reconcile these things every month, it's about 30 hours worth of work. And a lot of that has to do with our, in November, the company that handles our fuel management changed their program, and when they did, they moved all of our data for our vehicles over to a new program, and it did not transition well. It actually failed, and so a lot of the information that we had stored was changed and altered. They did not do a good transition. And so, for each of these transactions that are on here, it's not as, as simple as just going, okay, this is the vehicle and entering it. It's, I have to go through about 8,000 records to actually find the vehicle, and it's a process. It's not a, a simple putting it in. Okay, so, and I just did some, some, some cost analysis. For me to do that, if I do it the way it needs to be done, it's almost $1,000 a month in overtime pay for me to do that, because it's on top of what I'm already doing, which comes out to about $11,000 a year. Going to hit the next slide. So, I was asked about shrinkage before. During the last, the last Commissioners Court, I was asked, what's our shrinkage? And, and when we have this system, on a really bad month, we'd have about 100 gallons of shrinkage at most. Most months, we have very little to no shrinkage. Since we've been going to this, we're at about 400 gallons of shrinkage a month. And there's different, 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 oh, you can hit the next one. So, that comes out to, it's, I think about $900 a month in shrinkage that, that we have, that we're spending, that we're not able to track. And I based that number off of what we've been, what, like, over the last year, what our average fuel cost was, I based it on that. Is that not on there? Okay, hit the next button. Okay, so something really interesting, and I think this is a good example of a big problem that we have right now with the way things are going. On April 15th, I pulled up to put gas in my truck, and somebody had put 58.7 gallons of gas into something. And, I mean, this is a fuel pump, so while we're not tracking it, we don't have, you know, a computer system to track it. The pump has a gauge that says how much, how much is put out. What I find really interesting about that is we don't have a single vehicle or unit or anything for Aransas County that will hold near 58.7 gallons. So, I went back and looked at, at the, the record, and I figured, okay, maybe you had two, two, two people from the same department, or three people from the same department that pulled up, put gas in, and instead of resetting it every time, you know, just filled up several vehicles. That didn't happen. There were no transactions that anywhere totaled anything near that number right there. So, basically, we gave away over 100 bucks of free gas to something. I don't know where it went. I'd like to say it was a, you know, a simple human error. I, I can't really say, you know, as far as the cause of the shrinkage, you know, it can be, you know, part of the shrinkage, I'm going to, I'm going to assume is people forget to write it down. You know, I have people that'll come up to me, I have a really clear thing on the fuel thing that says, this is how you get gas right now. I still have people asking me, what do I do? So, there's going to be some human error. Some of it, like that particular transaction really leads me to believe that there's something other than just simple human error going on there. Okay, you can go to the next slide.
Was that gas or diesel?
That's, that was gas. That was specifically gas.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Right now, the machine, are you still using the fobs?
That, no, we, we don't have a way to use them.
Anybody can pull up to the pump and activate it?
The only thing you have to do is like, on the old-school fuel pumps, there's a deal you flip up when you pull this out. That's all you have to do right now. So, we have no way to monitor where.
Do you let outside vehicles get into the yard, but have access to it?
Um, the, the gate stays open all day while we're there.
So, nobody is monitoring it at all at this point?
We don't have a way to.
Chris, why you have the lock?
I don't know that we can discuss this.
Well, we'd have to. It doesn't have any, it doesn't have any, anything to attach a lock to.
Yeah, but this is a presentation, I don't think we can discuss.
I've got, I've got, I've got a, I'll, I'll get to questions at the end. But those are good questions. All right, um, so this pump right here in a, is no longer operable. So, even if we got just the, the, the computer stuff going, this pump's not going to work again. It's, it's broke. There's a counter inside that's a few thousand dollars to replace that, that doesn't work anymore. The, the lifespan on these particular pumps we have is about 15 to 20 years, and we're, we're at that 20-year point. We're about 20 years into this system. You want to go to the next one? This pump right here, we, we've had to work on several times. The parts inside of it are getting tired and, and, and old. It won't be long before this one gets to where we're going to, we're going to have to make an investment to actually get it to fix stuff that's breaking, and, and the replacement cost of, of this type of pump isn't, isn't that much money. We're, we're, we're getting to where fixing them is going to be pretty much the equivalent of, of a replacement cost. Want to go to the next one? All right, so one of the biggest problems that we've had with this fuel system since it was installed is vapor lock, and any of the sheriff's deputies that have got gas during the summer will tell you that if they go in the afternoon, they can get about two or three. And any of the sheriff's deputies that have got gas during the summer will tell you that if they go in the afternoon, they can get about two or three gallons and then the pumps shut off. That is a problem we've had for 20 years since we've had this. Mike Gordon, before he retired, when we were talking about the system, you know, he was, he was telling me that when we got this, this, this system set up, it wasn't what we ordered, but his predecessor just kind of let it go. They didn't give us what we asked for. He didn't care. That's the story I got. It's a secondhand story. So one of the, it, it was, it was worse. We used to get about a, you know, about a half gallon out before it shut down, but we insulated the pipes. Basically there's a suction pump in each of the gas pumps. The, the piping that comes off of it goes up to the top of the, the, the tank and then runs down to the bottom of it. And in the summer, when it gets nice and hot, the, the gas atomizes and vaporizes. And so you're sucking vapor and you're not actually getting, getting gas. And that, that's just been a constant complaint from, complaint from the sheriff's department and, and from anybody that's got gas in the afternoon and the summer. Want to go to the next slide? All right, no, last, the last thing I want to point out, so these guys right here are pretty old. They, they actually have a battery built into it. And if you look on there next to where it's at, there's a little silver gray looking thing that actually wirelessly charges these things. They're getting to where they, they don't like to charge well and they don't like to communicate with these things well. And, and the reason I bring that up is just to point out that the entire system is really just getting tired. Want to go to the next? All right, so the diesel pump, we have some, some issues with those two. So this is our diesel pump. We have a single pump on that tank. Click next. So again, this system is 20 years old. It's getting tired and we're not going to click next. So one of the, one of the problems we've had with the diesel pump is that it keeps breaking down. This year we've had about 10 days of downtime, about four and a half months into the year. It keeps breaking and we keep having to fix it and it's not going to be long before it's broke, broke. All right, you want to go to the next one? And the, the control head on this one, just like the ones on the gas one, it doesn't have a lot of life left. It's, it's, it's going to fail pretty soon. And hit the next one. Now the diesel is a little different than the gas. We have to report to the Texas state comptroller. The diesel we use, when we buy diesel, we don't pay tax on it. And so one of the things that our system does is it tracks where the diesel goes. So we have trucks and other things that use diesel that get driven on the road. That was their, their intended use. We have to go track that and go back and, and write a check to the state for tax every quarter. On our off-road equipment, the stuff we build roads and things with and do seal coating, we don't pay tax on that. So we have to keep meticulous records of which vehicles, which units are, are getting diesel. So that we know how much to pay the state, the, the state comptroller. Because they can come in and audit us at any time and, and so it's, it's important that we're tracking this accurately. All right, go to the next one. All right, so up on the side of the box right there, there's a little antenna looking thing. Hit the next button for me. And there's a big, I'm going to. That, that little antenna is right here. It talks to this tower right there and we've had issues, issues with those, those two wanting to communicate. We've had to do some work on it from time to time and it's not a very effective system. Colin will attest to that. He hates it. He hates this thing. And actually one of the, the advantage, okay, well, I'll get to that in a minute. Okay, hit the next. Okay, so I do have some solutions, fortunately. I'm not here just to tell you all the problems. Okay, hit the next button. Okay, so on the, the gas tank, one of the things that we can do to eliminate the, the vapor lock problem that we've had for almost 20 years is to install a pump inside that tank. So right now we just have pipe going down in there and the pumps suck the gas out. We're going to, we, I want to change it to a dispenser style system. And so you want to hit the next button? And so Will, the diesel does not have that problem because it's, it was set up properly. It's a little different and it doesn't have the vapor issues that gas does. We're going to put a pump inside the tank and then we'll replace all of the pumps with, the gas will get two new pumps or two new dispensers, I'm sorry. And the diesel will get a new, new pump. And that's just a generic picture of, of something we could get. All right, go to the next one. One of the things that I really like about the new systems, about the new, new pumps and dispensers is that they'll have like this control head will be built into it. It won't be something where we have to buy that in addition, it would be included in that. Want to hit the next button? And then all of this stuff that's wearing out, we would, we would replace that too, as well as new fuel management software that, that would be included. We've had a lot of service issues with the company that we have. We don't want to use them again. All right, you want to hit the next one? All right, so new electrical, one of the things that we're going to do, I'm going to walk over. Over here where our breaker is, we want to actually relocate it to this, this building right here. This is a road and bridge building. One of the things that we did when this building was built, it was set up for hurricane, for hurricane. That, that's definitely an issue we want to deal with. So we'll actually trench around this and run hardwire everything into that building. One of the things that we had to do before when Harvey hit was we took a little generator and stuck it next to the gas pumps. And anytime you needed gas or diesel, you walked over, turned on the generator and that's how you got your power. What, uh? What we want to do is run the electrical to that building. That building was, was set up. It's got a big massive breaker setup on the outside. So if we do have another hurricane and we don't have power, we can plug a generator in real quickly and, and be up and running again. And this would run off of, of that power. Another thing that we need to do is bring the electrical up on, electrical on it up to code. One of the things that we're not in, in compliance with, I wasn't aware of this, but I've been finding out as I've been shopping this stuff. We're supposed to have an emergency stop switch for the fuel system. This, this includes mounting an emergency stop switch on the side of that building. We have to be, I think a hundred feet away. That's the only place that makes logical sense to do it. Are you going to hit the next slide? Okay, so we had four vendors that put in bids. We, we'd sent out for, for bids. We had four vendors that had put in for bids for this fuel system. D and H United, Excel Fueling Systems, JF Petroleum and R and R Petro Services. You want to hit the next? So Excel Fueling Systems. I, I've, I've listed up there the, the types of pumps and all the different stuff they want to give us. They, they are, they're pitching Gasboy pumps and dispensers, Asset Works Fuel Management Software. And their, their cost came in at $124,000. One of the things that I asked for, there's an annual service cost that we pay right now. We pay about $2,400 a year through this company SCI to handle our software and everything. I asked for that when I, when I said, sent it out because I want to know what we're going to be spending. They didn't include that. I have no idea what their, their, their annual service agreement was. Hit the next one. The next one was R and R Petro Services. They wanted to go with Bennett Pumps and Dispensers. Petrovend was the brand of fuel management software they wanted to go with and they came in at a little over $112,000. Their annual service fee was $822 a year. The first, what was it? Five, three? I can't, okay, the first three years that was actually included in their bid. So the first three years would be covered and then we'd be paying that $822 a year after that. And you want to hit the next one? All right, JF Petroleum, they came, they, they were offering Gasboy pumps and dispensers, Gasboy Fuel Management. And they came in at $92,500. Their annual service fee was $960 and the first, I think, three years of that, I'm sorry, I have a hard time reading. Five years, okay, the last one was three years, this one was five years. They included the first five years in, in their, their bid package. And you want to go to the last one or the next one, sorry? And D and H United Fueling Solutions, they had the, offering Gasboy pumps and dispensers with a, a Gasboy Fuel Management Software. They came in at just over $79,000 and their annual fee is, is $800 and they included the first five years in their, their bid. You want to go to the next one? All right, so my recommendation is these guys right here, D and H United Fueling Solutions. You want to go to the next one? So apples to apples comparisons. All of these companies that put in bids, they may have some like different brands, but everything they pitch does the same thing. The saw, I mean, the pump is going to look a little different. The software is going to operate a little different, but the information that we need, that we, that's important to us as Aransas County. Everybody's giving us the same thing. So I can't, I could not come up with a reason to justify going with anybody besides these guys based on price. It just doesn't make, make sense to spend more money when we're getting the same thing from these guys that we get from everybody else. You want to go to the next? Okay, yeah, and they were the lowest cost, I said that. Okay, go to the next one. Okay, so Gasboy is a, a industry leader in their field. They're one of the most reliable, dependable companies doing fuel management software and doing fuel pumps. The pumps we have right now are Gasboy. We've had them 20 years. We've been able to keep them going and we've been really happy with what we've had. Want to go to the next one? Okay, and yeah, and they've just been reliable. As far as, you know, this stuff has been obsolete. This company said this stuff is obsolete. Gasboy, their stuff has never become obsolete. So they've never had the issue that we're having right now. So 20 years from now, what they're telling me is you'll still be able to get parts for our system. We can replace it and instead of having to go out and buy a whole new everything all over again, you know, 15 or 20 years from now, we can replace pieces as we need to. All right, one of the things I really like about these guys, they have a field office in Corpus Christi. They're, they're all over the nation. But if we have an issue, we have a, a five year service, we'll get a five year service agreement for repairs. First five years is included. They've got an office in Corpus where they can send someone out whenever we need. All right, so this is just some costs of, of what it's going to cost us if this system keeps getting worse, keeps breaking down. So our shrinkage cost every year is about $10,000. The labor cost for me doing these, these, these lovely little things is almost $12,000. Last year we saved about $35,000 with our fuel system as opposed to sending people to the pumps. Because of the amount of fuel we buy, we save about 50 cents a gallon. Off what the, what you pay at the pump. And when I've got, I've got numbers that shows how much fuel we bought, how many gallons, what we paid. I've got all that because I know you guys were asking about that. Last year we saved about $35,000. That's just on gas. And so by us, if, if this thing does break down and we have to start going to the pump, we're going to start spending a lot more. And that doesn't even include the diesel. I did not, I didn't get that number. Are you going to hit next? All right, so you guys have questions?
Do you have the total gas, total fuel cost for the year what we buy?
Absolutely, we can't cancel it. We'll discuss that when it comes up. Chris, we can't ask you questions, right? This is a presentation.
Oh!
When the item comes up, we'll discuss.
Okay, so we'll do questions later.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Very informative.
I wanted to. Thought there was more questions than answers last time. I knew what we were looking at.
All right, under the consent agenda, first, the first item has already been taken care of. Item four and five, we have Ms. Russo that wants to talk about something on most. So. I have a motion that we approve. A minute.
I move.
Motion made. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, discuss, prove, disprove, acceptance of road, county road administrators of Aransas County 2020 annual road condition report. David, do you have anything to add to the, what you've turned in?
Yeah. The, the reason that we have this road report is part of the grant that we are applying for. The grant writer suggested that the, the report would be part of the checking off the boxes for it.
David, this is a particular grant. This is the one that comes in from fuel, fuel usage or production of oil and gas in, in the state. Okay.
Yeah, CTIF.
Okay, Ms. Russo, you have a question?
I did have a question. I wondered if there is a copy of that road conditions report that's available? And if so, how I might procure one? And I wonder if in that report, it says how they manage to assess the road conditions.
The, the road condition was assessed by county staff. There is a copy of it. We really just got this put together in time to get it on this commissioner's court because it was specifically for that grant. But be glad to get you a copy of it.
Okay, thank you, David.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I, I often get, I often get requests from the public about the status of 1781. I think this may be more of a grant question than a roads and bridge question, but anything you can tell me, David, today about where we are in the process of doing any major work on farm, farm, farm market road 1781?
Seventeen eighty-one is one of the projects that will be funded in the CDBD GR, did I get those initials right? Grant, so hopefully soon.
Does that mean, I mean, does soon mean like within this year, 2020? Or do you have any idea yet?
Within the next two years.
Within the next two years.
All right, I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion made. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Prove, disprove, consider approval, prioritize list of roads for the Texas Department of Transportation. Twenty twenty county transportation infrastructure fund. David, you have any?
These, these roads were what road and bridge staff came up with, the projects that we needed to get done that met the criteria for the grant. And this part of that taking off the box.
What's the, what's the timeframe if everything was perfect and you could do all of this, what would be the timeframe, about five years?
I hope not. I really, I really don't know how quickly the, the, well. No, the, the pri, the prioritized list is like four roads that we have on there that we need to do. It's not. There's, and, and I don't know how quickly the grant money will come to us. That's going to be the hard part. We'll get it spent in that year when we get it.
Yeah, you have to, you have to submit it to the text out, right?
Right.
And they probably will act because it's a 2020 program.
Right.
I would imagine you get the funds probably this year.
I, I, I think so. I think they're already allocated, the, the number's already there, so it, it should come pretty quickly, just paperwork.
Well, this was a, the, to do this was a very quick or a very short timeline, right?
It was, yes.
So a lot, a lot of counties that would be eligible for this or not because they couldn't get it in the time.
Well, I, I, I can't speak for what other counties are doing or not doing.
It's reasonable to assume.
But, but all the counties had an allocation. You know, whatever it is.
Can you give us just a brief overview of what the requirements of the grant were?
I don't have that information with me, but generally it was roads that are damaged from. Traffic that comes from. Yeah, yeah.
Does mining traffic going to be included on that with the sand mine?
Probably not, but I don't know how, how strict they are in, in really analyzing what caused the damage we're trying to fix.
Yeah, be interested to do that because I know for in my precinct now.
Yeah.
It's been damaged severely because of.
But they should.
David, on the, on the, the roads that you put down here for use, it comes to about $175,000, $180,000. How much did we, we plan on getting on this grant?
Our allocation is 147,000 that we need to pay 20% of that. So I wanted the total amount to be above that in case it's cheaper.
It's an interesting program. I, I don't know, judging if you were at that particular situation, a lot of counties that didn't even apply for this, didn't know about it or whatnot. So.
It, it is interesting that I've had several people call me to say that there's a grant out here that we needed to apply for.
Exactly.
David, can you tell what the, which the four roads are?
I got them here in front of me.
Agri Island, Cassuth and Copano Retreat.
Co-sister, North Co-sister.
Yeah.
David, isn't this, this kind of the same program that a few years ago? Most of the counties, when the Eagle Ford got large amounts of money to redo their roads?
I, I believe so, yes.
It's kind of an offshoot of that.
Right.
We actually applied back then, but never got anything.
Actually, what they've gone to now is they actually do the, the amount that's available to you. Text dot does that based on statistics that they give.
We had a deal back then, but then.
Yeah, but, but they, they've reworked the program, made it available to everybody now.
Now the, and these, these roads are all projects we were going to do anyway. This is just getting paid for it, so.
Ms. Russo, did you have a question?
I did, and I heard part of the answer, but I wondered what were those four roads again? David, Cassuth, Copano Retreat?
You want me to read them?
Yes, please.
We've got, we've got North Co-sister, Bapel to Linden Street, Level Up and Chip Seal for $39,550. North Co-sister, Linden to Sabanaw, Level Up and Chip Seal, $36,430. Copano Retreat Road, State Highway 188 to Swan Lake Park, Recycle, Stabilize and Chip Seal, 62,185. Agri Island, Farm, Farm Market Road, 136 to Refiro to, to Refiro, Level Up and Chip Seal for a total of 35,183.
Thank you.
And I take it nobody has a problem with it? And I take it nobody has a problem with our sending a copy of that report to Pet Russo also?
I can get, I can give both of these to him today if they want them.
That'd be fine.
Make a motion, I'd make a motion to approve, Judge.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, David.
All right, in the interest of getting people back to work, I haven't been sitting here much longer. Let's go to item 11, discuss, approve, disprove, abort bid for new fuel pumps and fuel management software. In that respect, I got word from Auditor's Department that CEOs, 2016 CEOs, there's money in there for that. And so there's no money out of the budget.
This won't be impacting our general fund.
No.
All right, make a motion to approve, Judge.
Motion made, and seconded, all those in favor? In that.
D and H?
Yeah, D and H. All right, you can go back to work now, Chris. See, that wasn't that hard, was it?
Keep your eye on a gas pump while you're out there, will you?
All right, you too. Item six, prove, disprove, allowing the Ranses County Animal Control Director to seek and apply for pet smart charities grant. The grant is aimed at increasing health and opportunities for chronically under-resourced pets and their people, and their people by facilitating the delivery of accessible basic veterinarian care. Wow, didn't know that was available. Lori, you want to come up and tell us about it?
You know, the focus of animal care is changing to retention. And I found with the new software that we've got, thanks to Colin, I can pull a lot more data off. Over probably 85% of the animals that I do impound are not spay or neutered. So a lot of times they're releasing them because they have puppies out of control. So I want to reverse our deal more to retention, how can we help keep them in there? So this fund, this grant that I want to try to get will help them that don't have the money to pay the prices downtown. See if I can work some deals with somebody, so maybe this grant would focus more on keeping that pet at home instead of us dealing with it at the county level, that an easy solution is to surrender it.
Who's doing the grant, who's, yeah, who's doing the grant work for us? Are you doing it?
I took it upon myself to start.
About, how many animals do we span neuter a year?
Well, see, we do the adoption ones, and our adoption on cats was 3% last year. Out of 800 cats we took in, only 24 were adopted. Dogs was a little bit better, was about 60 out of 800. They, the rescues pick up that tab, so they pick up the rest.
So I guess my question really is, what is the cost to spay and neuter as we, as we need to? If we, if we in our next budget increase that to where we can get, you know, 50% or something like that? Done, because we're never going to get a handle on this until we get these, these animals fixed.
I'm working on area and Smith Road, I have four females set to get spayed, because that's what they have there. I have already taken this year from that property alone, 18 puppies. So I have to, you have to go to the root of the problem. They're not bad owners, they just are uneducated in animal welfare, what's best for the animal.
Well, you know, we spend a lot of, lot of money on it, and you're doing a very good job out there, we spend a lot of money on there where we get basically repeat customers like prison system, you know?
Right.
And, you know, if, if we can put more money into, in like phasing into, you know, a large span neuter program, it looks to me like in the long run, we're going to save money doing that.
Yeah, we would, the hard part is I am lacking vets to get on board.
I understand that.
That is my biggest, I am friends with Samantha Persons, who runs the Cattery. I was instrumental in bringing the Cattery mobile over here. Also Wellness on Wheels, which we all know as LRCA, I'm responsible for rabies. So that was a plus, you know, there's lots of things that we can do, but you got to go after it. You can't just sit and wait.
Laurie, is that, is that a resources problem, a problem of not having enough money to pay the vets back for the work? Or is it just a question of the volume, or what's, what's keeping you from getting the vets on board?
Vets are all too busy.
Well, they're, they're private businesses, so it's a little bit different. I know how much roughly a cat neuter costs, I, I know that can be done for $35. Somebody offered me to do one for, it was 122, that is a lot of, understand we pay for their degree and stuff and they spend a lot of time, but that's not very practical for an animal in a shelter environment. I mean, it has to be quick, I know how long it takes to do them because we did them at Humane Society on a table. I mean, it, it's not hard.
It's not really so much a question of needing money in the budget, it's that we have a disconnect between what they think the market value of a spaying is versus what we think it should be. I mean, I, that's what I'm asking, if you just had money in the budget, would that solve the problem, or does it seem to you? Find more.
Money, money would help, yes, but still, a dog's spay is going to run about $200 without some sort of price break. If you take 50% of them were females that came in, that, that's a lot of money. You know, Tana does her part. Tana.
Who is it that can do neuterings for $35 per operation?
Cattery Mobile does that, dog, dog spays, I believe, under 35, 30 pounds is the limit, weight limit on the bus, or 65.
And there, is the problem there just capacity, they don't have enough capacity to handle our volume?
Well, I've got my foot in the door, back in the door over there. They are going to start reserving me some spots so I could get them done. But, you know, it's as we adopt them out is how we generally do it, as they are adopted. They're not altered prior to adoption. But that doesn't help the people that own the animals, I need them to retain their animal, I don't want it there.
To get that done, to get the, to get the others done.
Save you from ever touching the.
Right, that, that's the whole thing, is to save us from ever having to touch it. If I can go in and get, send them the resources, which way to go, then I, I want to be out of the loop.
What you're looking for is a way to get a, more of a, a public, low-cost neutering service offered to, to people.
Yes, that would be, but.
And what's?
Bring some monies in, at least would help.
And what's your obstacle to getting there, is it the capacity issue, or the, or the funding, or both?
Dollars is always a issue, finding monies, but people don't have that kind of money for.
If you had, if you had the funding, would that solve your problem, or do you also have a capacity issue we need to work on?
It would solve part of the problem, but part of the problem is education as well.
Lori, what does it, what does it take to be able to legally spay and neuter an animal? Do you have to have a veterinarian degree?
Yes.
You can't do it like a, like a PC?
No. No, well, you know, males are a lot different because it's not evasive. Females, you know, you're opening the body, i- is, is a different ballgame. You know, males are different.
Okay, talking about a grant.
I just want to see, get to see what we can do.
Second.
Allow her to apply for the grant.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
In that. Okay, discuss, prove, disprove, allowing Animal Control Director to seek and apply for Saretto, Saresto, Circle of Life Grants 2020 sponsored by AdoptedPet.com. Giving away $100,000 worth of product such as collars that help control fleas and ticks for up to eight months.
Make a motion to approve, Judge.
Motion made.
Thank you.
Have a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, item 16 needs to be moved up. Discuss, prove, disprove, resolution R 2010, 2020, Resolution Amendment Authorizing Representation With the Texpool Investment Service for Public Funds.
Are we? Pardon?
Oh, 17.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry about that, forget that one, let's go to 17. Prove, disprove, 2019 Fiscal Year Compensation Financial Audit, Ranses County. Come on up, sorry, that was so word down the line.
Thank you, Judge.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning. Morning.
I believe everybody has a copy of the art. This, there's a, there's an insert in the beginning of the report, I'd like to just do that first, if I may. And I'm Wayne Byer, and I'm with Byron Company, and from Pleasanton, Texas, and Sutton. We have two comments on this letter. If you go down towards the bottom, this is what we call an internal control letter, or a management comment letter. Under permits, we noted that several billing permits were charged incorrectly. We recommend that all charges, fees, and our calculations pertaining to permits be made in accordance with approved rate, rate sheets, and the county perform routine internal tests to ensure accuracy and accountability. And then the district clerk, is the district clerk here at all? District clerk, we noted that the registry of the court bank account is short in the amount of $4,846.91. It has been short this same amount for several years. Well, there's only really two things that can be done with this account. Either, and then the county clerk, I guess, is really responsible for that account, her account. She could either make, make up that shortage, or the county can assist her in making up that shortage, counties do it either way. Usually commissioner's court will go ahead and help that, help the officer.
Was there any reason given as to why it was short?
Well, just several years, it's just a normal procedure. Pardon me? Yeah, it's, it's like a lot of your county officers, officers over periods of years. These accounts will either have accumulated deficit or accumulated surplus in these accounts. And then when a new officer comes in and takes over, they just take over the, the account from the previous officer, and it goes on for several years, it's just a normal thing in, in county government.
But you mentioned the bank account is short.
Yeah, this is the registry account, yes.
What's reflected on our financial statement?
It's not, it's not going to be on your, the one, the financial statement I'm going over where this is, is basically called an agency account. She holds it for the benefit of others. But, so it's not going to be reflected in what investors see, or people outside readers seeing your financial statements, no.
What about just writing the balance down on our books?
That's what we've done all this time. It was recommended last year that the county go ahead and just fix it so it doesn't appear this way going forward. There's enough money in the account that money comes in, we have to pay it out per order, and we never get down to enough that it went short, that we write a check. But in the meantime, that's what the accounting firm suggested that they do. In the past, we've just carried it forward knowing that there's that shortage, we've looked for it for years.
So that we, let me make it so if I understand, so we've got a detail as to what is actually owed to various people?
Yes.
And so, but we're short by that amount of money running.
Yes. In answer to your first question, Commissioner, I guess indirectly it would affect the finances of the county in the audit report. Because in order to get this balance back to zero.
We'd have to transfer it out of some fund.
Yes, you'd have to budget that in like the general fund, and then issue a check out of the general fund, yes.
But the, but the point, but the point is, the shortage has been the same amount of money for a long period of time, okay, fair enough, that's all.
Okay, okay.
On the permits, what, what was the issue on the permit?
They're not being calculated correctly, from what I understand. Did she talk you about that?
That was about two or three meetings ago, we did bring a schedule to the commissioners to approve a schedule for the permits, there was not a. So they do have something now, this one has been corrected already.
Okay, moving on to the regular audit report, were there any other questions?
No, I would like to compliment you on a comment that you made in here. Where you talked about one balances and, and the entire county has had a big increase last year in terms of available assets. And you referred to good budgetary control, I like that, thank you.
In fact, I was just going to talk about that.
Well, go ahead.
You stole the thunder, Charlie.
Yeah, you did, yes. That was half my presentation there. Moving on to pages one to page three is our auditor's report. The primary purpose of auditing is expressing an opinion on the financial statements. This is what they call an unmodified opinion, it actually is two opinions wrapped in the one opinion. Two different sets of standards. You have the standards because you have a single audit because of the, basically because of Hurricane Harvey. You had a grant expenditures last year that exceeded $750,000. If you look on page one where it says auditor's responsibility, in that second sentence, it says, we conducted our audit in accordance with audits, the auditing standards, generally accepted United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. So the first set of standards is how regular audits are conducted in accordance where those are rules and procedures. Every auditing firm in the country has to follow those same rules and procedures. That second set of standards with the Comptroller General, those are additional standards that we have to follow when performing a single audit, which I had stated was precipitated by the Hurricane Harvey grant expenditures. So this is an unmodified opinion for both your, your grant expenditures and also for your regular financial audit. If you turn to, let's just turn over page number 20 in, in the audit report. Page 20 in the audit report is kind of a bird's eye view of what transpired last year in the county. With the exception of your airport and transfer station funds. Transfer station and commissary fund. That first column is your general fund, and if you look down towards the bottom there, three lines from the bottom, your general fund increased last year by $454,923. You had a beginning equity in that fund of $5.991 million. And that gave you an ending equity in the general fund of $6.4 million. That second, that second column is your road and bridge fund. There, if, again, if you look three lines from the bottom, you had a, you had a surplus for the year, or your revenue has exceeded your expenditures by $330,641. You started a year with a, with a reserve equity of $3.223 million. And that gave you an ending equity of $3.5 million. If you add those two together, because generally, you know, general fund and road and bridge funds are basically grouped into one item as far as, you know, compared, comparing your, how sufficient is your ending equity, so you have, if you take your ending equity of $6.4 million to your general fund, add to that to your ending equity is $3.5 million in your road and bridge funds, you gotta have ending equity about $10 million. Both those funds combined, and if you go up, those first two columns, you go up about five or six line, lines, you see total expenditures, the general fund is $14,800,000. And then your road and bridge fund was $2,443,000, it's about. uh, seventeen thought, seventeen million dollars combined expenditures. So you had uh, seventy million dollars expenditures last year in those two funds. You had ending uh, equity of ten million dollars. So you have about a six, sixty percent coverage of your coverage of your ending equity versus your expenditures last year. Which, and then you, anything is uh, like to have at least twenty five percent in there. So you're way over that. So you have actually extremely good um, extremely good uh, reserves at the end of the year. Just quickly, that third column is your road, your capital projects fund. That was basically for the last two years, that would be your Hurricane Harvey fund for the last couple of years. And then that fourth column is your healthcare sales tax fund. And there, if you look, that's your fourth column, up three lines, you had a, a loss or excess of expenditures over, over revenues last year of four hundred forty seven thousand dollars. You had a beginning reserve of one point two million dollars. You were left with an ending reserve of eight hundred thousand dollars. And if you go up about five lines and compare that to your expenditures last year of seven hundred thousand dollars, you still have a, over a hundred percent ending equity coverage of your expenditures last year. So that's uh.
Mr. Byer, can I ask a question about that third column right there, which is accounts for the uh, considerable uh, change in fund balance? That's the uh, capital projects. And you mentioned that it comes from Hurricane Harvey. If you look back over on page eight, current and other assets, two thousand eighteen versus two thousand nineteen, we had a, almost a similar increase of roughly a five point, almost five point four million dollars. So most of the, would, would insurance be included into that as far?
There's a lot of money that came in from FEMA also.
It was FEMA reimbursements because it's all reimbursable. Just were done in one year and we were, they were reimbursed.
Okay, so we had the negative balance in preceding year and this was recouping it in the
Ordinarily.
A timing difference is what it was.
You would ordinarily would accrue that, but FEMA is so funny, such a funny grant. You just never know what they're gonna reimburse and when they're gonna reimburse it.
Yeah, I've heard other people refer to it, but using a different terminology, not funny.
They uh, they operate differently than other agencies.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, moving over to page twenty two and twenty three um, is a kind of a more expanded version of the general fund. And, and um, on, on both pages, that first column on either page would be your, your adopted budget for the year. The second column is your final amended budget for the year. And then um, your third column are your actual income expenditures for the year. And that fourth column is your uh, budget variance column. Uh, your income starts at the top of page twenty. And then in the middle of the page, goes about the middle of the page and you expect that's, your expenditures start there. It runs all the way toward a page twenty three. Um, simply put on your, the fourth column on your budget variance column, if it has ver- brackets around it, it's an unfavorable variance. If it doesn't have brackets, it's a favorable variance. Excuse me. So if you look at the top of page um, twenty two, um, you can see on the total revenues in that fourth column, you actually had thirty eight thousand six hundred and fifty one dollars um, over budgeted revenues for the year, for the whole year. That's all your, all your different uh, revenue categories. Um, um, responding to the commissioner, you know, if you look on your expenditures, starting, you know, on page twenty two, there's very, very few departments that were actually over budget last year. In fact, I think there were a couple of them. I always like to look at the sheriff's office because there are notoriously over budgeted in counties, but this, your sheriff actually came in under budget. That'd be the very bottom row on page twenty two. And then the jail, uh, three, two lines up, the jail actually came in well under budget by hundred sixty nine thousand dollars. So. And then overall, uh, page twenty uh, three. You look on that fourth column, about six or seven lines up where it says total expenditures. Overall, your expenditures were under budget by one point three million dollars. Okay, uh, quickly, um, on um, pages twenty nine, page twenty nine are your um, your, what we call proprietary funds. Yes, there's three in this county. You have the airport, the transfer uh, station, and then the commissary fund. On the first two, these are presented a little bit differently under, I was talking with Commissioner Shady before the meeting, talking about how accounting seems to make things more complicated than they need to be with this um, airport fund. That first column is airport fund for two thousand nineteen. That second column would be the airport fund activity for uh, two thousand eighteen. And if you look there, um, three lines from the bottom where it says change in net position. Last year you had a, a loss of a hundred twenty six thousand dollars. And then the year before you had a loss of nine hundred eighty four thousand dollars. And interesting, if you look up on that second column at the very top, under church, charges for services, you can see the big difference. Almost doubled your uh, charges for services from last year to this year from five hundred fifty two thousand to a million eighty two thousand. That was one of the big differences. Mainly, mainly the big difference, I guess. Actually, uh, if you look on a total operating, operating, operating expenses actually went down in two thousand nineteen. This one point six oh seven million dollars for one point six three eight million dollars. And then um, in that third column would be your transfer station for last year, for two thousand nineteen. Two thousand, uh, the fourth column be the transfer station for two thousand eighteen. And again, in that third column, if you go up three lines, you had a profit of twenty six thousand dollars last year. And then the year before, you had a profit of two hundred eighty one thousand dollars. Okay, one, couple other items here. If you go to page number turn to page fifty four, please, if you would. On page fifty four is a summary of all the debt of the county. And this is, uh, encompasses what I call regular debt. And then debt doesn't put in because um, people that rate these organizations, rate, rate um, bonds for a different organization, they wanna see this information in these reports. And that first column is your beginning of the year debt. And then that fourth column is your end of the year debt. And your debt is made up, you have certificates of obligation. If you go to the very top of that fourth column, almost fifty million dollars. And then you have revenue bonds of one point eight seven million dollars. You have another kind of debt called what they call a net pension payable. And what that is, is that's your pension plan um, with the um, it's called TDCRS. TDCRS. That's your pension plan. And that is the amount by which I um, you have an excess of owing, the amount you owe out of that plan is greater than actually the assets in the plan, which is not unusual. Now, I'll look at, show you that in a second. You, so you have that debt. And you have also with the compensated absences, which is accrued but untaken vacation pay at the end of the year. So overall, your debt is twenty one million dollars at the end of the year. And I would tell you, I've seen organizations much, much, much smaller than Aransas County that have just as much debt as that.
What was the primary reason for the huge increase in the pension payable for the year?
Oh, because, well, um, they raised the interest, basically is what they did. You know, there's, this information is all calculated by actuaries. And you have about fifteen, twenty parameters they use. One of them is interest rate. They will go into the future and determine what they feel like the interest rate's gonna be like twenty or thirty years down the road. And then they'll um, discount it to the current day. And that increased.
Well, they had been operating on a, an assumption of somewhere between six and seven percent. So they reduced it down in the front.
Let's see here, discount rate eight point, eight point one percent. If you go to page sixty. I guess it's on page sixty, yeah. It says discount rate, you see in the middle of the page, eight point, well, it says that way last year. Let me find these rates.
Discount rate, yeah.
Eight point one. What do they say? They use it same last year. So I, gosh.
Yeah, it can't be that.
No. Well, you know, other, the other reasons that happens, of course, I'm sure you didn't go down on a percentage that you contribute on behalf of the county. So the other reason would be um, the other big thing that happens is long-term employees leaving. You know, that, that really affects it also. Because they'll take their money out of that account. And that'll usually have a big, big effect, a negative effect.
That should be, if, it would seem to me that if a long-term employee left, that that money was already funded in the plan to start off with, though at that point in time. I don't know how that would affect it that much.
I, I.
This is, this is based on the actuarial?
Yes, sir.
Report from TCDR?
Yes, sir. This is a replica.
That'd be interesting to look at that. That's a huge increase in one year. I'm not suggesting they made a mistake, but I'd sure like to know why.
Is he really an accountant? Are you?
Yes.
Are you an accountant?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, this is taken.
I used to be an accountant.
Okay.
Now I'm elected official.
Okay. This was taken directly from the uh, TDCRS.
I know you have to get it.
SOP one report, in fact.
I just can't imagine why it would have increased that much. When we started off the year with a six hundred and ninety thousand net underfunded position, all of a sudden we go to a two point nine, nine three. That, that's almost a four times increase or five times increase.
I can't explain to you why um, people leaving long-term employees, but it does have a negative effect. Seems like they take that money, they take that money out of there. Yeah.
But, but that should be accrued in computing each year. These people, once they become.
I don't know.
I don't understand, but it, I don't expect you to give me an answer. I was just wondering if you knew.
Thank you.
I think we can, we can probably talk with those people up there and try to find out what it is.
Does, does uh, uh, how does uh, changing the, the time span whenever the county becomes, whenever an employee becomes totally funded with the county? Like, we looked at ten years versus eight years versus five years. And that, that affects it pretty negatively too, doesn't it?
Yes, did you, did you change it?
No. Actually, what can happen, Commissioner, is if people, it takes ten years to get vested and say you had a whole bunch of people, all of a sudden became vested, that could change it. If you had people that terminated prior to the vesting, that's funds that are already paid in, so they stay in. But I could see if you, you increase the longevity of, 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 also a big number of them became vested at that point in time, that might impact it.
Okay.
And, and that, that's not necessarily a bad thing. That means that pension plan is doing what it was designed to do, is to help retain folks.
Well, that, I think that's all I have. Oh, I just wanna say you're the third person to ever question um, up, up front. The schedules up front in the management discussion analysis.
Oh, I love to look at numbers.
You're the first, third person to ever, ever talk about that.
That's what, that's one of my favorite pastimes.
And that's been in a, in a, that's been around about fifteen, twenty years.
I have a question. Do you, do you see any counties or cities or whatever that are trying to redesign their system where they can readily identify unfunded mandates? Rather than go through and have to dig it all out of there? If you set up a count where all of those were logged in, where you could keep track of being stuffed at the state mandates that we have to pay for, that we don't have any control over, is what I'm talking about.
No, no.
I, I, to me, I think that needs to be something that's, you open the page and there's a column that tells you how much it is for the general public to realize how big a deal it is.
Do you audit B county?
No, not anymore.
Well, I'm saying, but the average person doesn't have a clue of that.
That'd be a, a fun thing to do.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Byer.
In your presentation. Have a motion.
Motion to accept the report.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Ah.
Back to item number eight, approve this proof, authorize the judge to sign a long-term grant lease with Stewart Legacy Group LLC on airport property for the construction of a private nested twelve unit teehanger. Now, does anybody here know what nested means besides me?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, Mike and Mike and Mike. I just found out myself. I thought it had something to do with a bird, but it does. It's airplane. All right.
Mike, I have a couple of questions on the lease. Uh, does the leash, does the leash require that they actually build these uh, hangars?
Uh, well, no, not exactly. I guess we haven't really discussed that before now. Uh, uh, it, it just states in the lease that's what he's gonna do. It doesn't necessarily require it. And then, and the fact is, is that he's leasing, uh, he's leasing that uh, spot of land because it is, it already has some existing infrastructure uh, for a teehanger. In fact, we had a teehanger there before the hurricane and uh, and uh, we elected not to rebuild it just because we didn't need it. And um, and so he's gonna use the same piece of land and the foundation slab that the hanger was on before. Uh, which is also the reason why we're charging a little bit more for this land lease than we would uh, if somebody was just leasing dirt.
Yeah, but ac- actually, it would actually help the airport if he did build these hangars, if he was required to build it, hangars, because you'd sell more fuel more than likely.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And it, it'll also help catch overflow. Uh, we're, as we said right now, we're, we're gonna rebuild forty three teehanger, nested teehanger units. And uh, we've got a waiting list that has really grown exponentially over the last several months. It's uh, it's up over fifty aircraft now. So it'll actually help catch overflow.
It would be nice if you could just get a, a written commitment from the guy to go along with the lease. I don't.
Well, it, it seems logical that it's, it's to build a, a hanger on, that you would put some time frame. If the hanger's not built in that amount of time, that the, the lease becomes no more.
Uh, yeah, we can, we can definitely do that. Uh, we haven't done that in the past, uh, to be honest, with the other hangars. They've been conventional box hangars. Uh, this being a little different because it is a nested teehanger, but you know, Axe Aviation is who Stewart Legacy Group is. They have right now three airplanes and they're constantly looking at others. Um, so you know, it, at a certain point, you can't build a conventional hanger big enough to accept all of your uh, to, to hold all their airplanes under one, in, in one bay. Uh, so the teehanger becomes the more efficient way to store aircraft. And if they keep buying planes at the rate that they're doing now, which they're gonna have to uh, get a couple more planes anyway, just because of the uh, uh, of the amount of students that they have, the, the teehanger's gonna be the way to go for them. So it makes sense to do it uh, as, as far as uh, you know, uh, having some clause to say if they haven't begun work at, at such, by a certain date, uh, then we readdress it somehow. Uh, we've never done that before. I know he's being held up by some of the same things that we're being held up by, which is to say uh, building availability. Uh, uh, finding a, a reliable contractor to do the construction. Uh, he's done a lot of his back work. The, the, they've had the engineering done on the slab. That's why we're ready to move forward at this point. He's got his financing squared away. So uh, there's nothing atypical at this point. It's just a little bit different in that we're, we're, instead of a, you know, single bay conventional hanger, this is gonna be a twelve unit teehanger.
Mike, did you say that the price of lease already includes the assumption that the teehangers will be there? I mean, it sounds like he already has the strong incentive to build because otherwise he's overpaying for his lease.
Yeah, exactly. And so that, 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 you're right, that does incentivize him to build what was uh, what was agreed to, or what was at least verbally agreed to and what's mentioned in the contract. But uh, but no, uh, it, yeah, he, he, he'd be losing money if he did anything other uh, because of the uh, first of all, the lease that we're, we're leasing to and the plot of land is a rectangular lease shaped exactly like the previous teehanger. Fifteen thousand four hundred square feet, I think it is, but that's, it's in a rectangle lease. So if he built something, if he tried to build something other than a teehanger there, uh, he'd be in violation of the uh, the terms of the lease in, in that we haven't uh, we didn't lease him a square piece of land or, or, or like the other teehangers, or the, rather the other conventional hangars uh, that we've done in the past. Uh, the land is not conducive to that. The least amount.
Look in the past, because we have a surplus of land that we don't have leased up there, but in the long term, it might be a good idea to include something like that.
Absolutely. That's a, I'll talk to uh, the county attorney's office and we can probably get that uh, started on the next lease. Uh, and if, and if you think we need to do it on this one, we can absolutely take an E and uh, and do that and then, and readdress it. I don't think it's gonna be necessary again, just because it, uh, uh, I mean, if you look at the least, uh, the, the surveyed area that to be leased, there's the least, the, the surveyed area that to be leased, there's no way to put a conventional hangar on that.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made, have a second.
I would second it, but I would sure.
Second.
Hope you talk with the county attorney on the, you know, getting some sort of guarantee that they're gonna go forward, but.
Yes, sir.
All those for it?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion is made unanimous. Approve, disapprove, authorize county judge to sign an interlocal agreement with the city of Rockport regarding Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Grant Funds Budgeted for Restore Act budget, bucket number one grant program. Go ahead.
Yes, this is a, yeah, this on, this is a grant that we've been pursuing for the last three, maybe four years. Yeah, we formed a shoreline resilience committee and we started pursuing Restore Act funding. The county is the permutee and we have this interlocal agreement, so a working agreement between the city and the county to where the county is gonna manage the grant, we're gonna ma, we're gonna do the RF, the RFQs and RFPs for engineering and for um, and for contractor. And then it, the city's gonna do the monitoring of this, of the, of the construction, we'll do all the record keeping, at the end of the day, we're gonna give it back, we're gonna give it to the city, assign it over to the city. So this is in a local agreement and it worked out, and so we're gonna turn it over to the city for their approval, next, next court, our next commi, city council.
And this is part and parcel of the fact that we had a master plan.
Correct.
Everybody signed on to it, so this is just paperwork to carry out that plan that's.
Exactly, and it's a Restore Act, it's a two point four million dollar grant, no match.
Make a motion to approve, then.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
It's the next one.
All right, approve, disapprove, authorize county judge to sign a, a salmon agreement with city of Rockport, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, assign full ownership, control and sub grant funded improvements comfortable, not conflated in the interlokal cooperation agreement, city of Rockport, Bay Shore Drive.
One, one quick question, John, if, if there's an overrun as far as the cost of this?
It, it's in the, it's in the agreement, the interlocal agreement that the city's, it's the city's picking it up.
Okay, fair, fair enough. Make a motion to approve, then.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Yes.
Can we go any further? I don't, um, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody? I don't think we had a motion to approve or second on the um, the proclamation that y'all did with Jimmy Carter.
Yeah, probably didn't.
We, we could do that now.
I've moved to approve the.
Second it, yes.
Second it, all right, and a little late, but it's a little late than ever. Okay, thank you.
We'll need to vote on it.
Yeah, we need a vote.
We need a vote on it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, this is so complicated.
Yes, that's what I get for jumping ahead of myself. Anyway. Uh, item twelve, discuss, approve, disapprove, IT department to seek competitive sealed bids to replace end of life virtual infrastructure system housing.
Make a motion to approve, then.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's, it's going after bids, right?
Yeah.
This is your sherbers?
That's correct.
We voted, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, all right. Approve, disapprove, authorize IT department to seek competitive sealed bids to replace end of life wireless network infrastructure and components to use in several county facilities.
Make a motion to approve, can you give us?
Motion made, second, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Can you give us kind of an idea of the cost?
So, on this one, we're looking probably about a little less than fifty thousand dollars to replace um, access points and wireless controls throughout most of the county facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Approve, disapprove, April twenty twenty, Anderson Health Care Report.
The total expenditures for the month is twenty three thousand two dollars and nineteen cents. Um, year to date, which we're in the eighth month of the fiscal year, is three hundred and fifty nine thousand six hundred and forty nine dollars. We're sitting at three point three percent, which is close to where we were last year at three hundred and fifteen thousand last year spent. Any questions on it?
Motion made.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discuss, approve, disapprove, request by creation of additional full time position customer service specialist. This was tabled from the last meeting at the tax office. I think everybody's gotten additional information from Ms. Cox, so we're up for a discussion. Ms. Cox, are you on?
Jerry and Anna are on the telephone.
All right, you wanna talk to us some more, or you have anything else to say before we start asking?
Well, I would just, okay, I would like to say that I went back and researched how long there has been one tax collector and seven employees, total of eight in our budget, and that has been in place for twelve years. The last time an employee was added was with the January one, two thousand eight beginning budget cycle. So that's twelve years, uh, lots of things have happened and come on board, um, more record keeping in the last twelve years. Um, I have provided y'all with some stats that I had, that I compiled for this meeting, and I would like to state that um, these stats doesn't show any amount of property tax accounts that we post in the same time that we're doing these motor vehicle registration and titling transactions, just because it would take too long to compile. Um. I am open to questions on that data. Also, I have discussed with Jackie on the salary, I think Charlie had a question last meeting about how he didn't feel like the seventeen thousand for the rest of this budget year included burdens. And I've talked to her and um, they are still comfortable with that number, which would include April and May, which we haven't hired anybody for this new position, so it would even be less amount for this year's budget. But because my budget has attrition in it, because as the last few years, we've replaced employees that were making more money with the beginning salary rates, there is attrition in the budget and um. Let's see, oh, and then I was also giving up the part time three thousand dollars that I have in my budget. When Tana was doing calculations, she included that because I said that with this position, we wouldn't hire a part time person.
Yeah, Jerry, my, my comment, my, my comment was that the seventeen thousand dollars did not cover the actual cost of that employee. But what you're saying is that other things in the budget are gonna offset that. But going forward next year, that, that budgeted amount, you're looking at about thirty one thousand dollars, if you, if you talk about the fifteen dollars an hour, you're talking about thirty one thousand two hundred, plus approximately forty percent of that amount, which would push that cost up forty three thousand dollars. Those were the, the gist of my comments from last month. So I, I hate to, I hate to sit here and, and look at numbers and saying, well, we're taking savings in other areas, when I was asking about what was the true cost of adding one employee. So just to make sure that we're on the same page right there.
Okay.
Well.
Okay, well, I, go ahead.
No, no, I, I, I didn't, go ahead, I'm sorry.
And we talked, we talked two weeks ago about the, the issue of, I mean, there's, there's two questions here to decide, one is, you know, the, the, the need for a new employee, and the other is the need for revision to a budget rather than waiting until next year and including a new budget, including a new employee in the new budget. I, I, I still would like to hear some more about where the money would come from and whether we can't wait until the, the twenty twenty budget goes through and include it then.
Yeah, I, I think that Mrs. Cox's comments back from the last meeting was that she's incurring all of these additional time requirements because of the, the changes in the law, which apparently weren't anticipated in this year's budget. And now what we've got, and, and now what we've got.
The, the changes did take place though before the budget went through.
Well, also what's happened is uh, the tax office, in my understanding, has been closed now for what, Judge, about forty five days or so?
Open the same time.
Open back up, okay.
Yes.
The situation, the situation is you have a backlog of people that'll be coming in. And my comment on that is, look, the state has backed up on license renewals and things like that, they don't seem to be in a big hurry to get out there and serve the public by, by putting on additional people. I know because I've got an expired driver's license right now, and I have to actually go to the office, and the office is still not open, those, those motor vehicle offices is the issue, because of my age. I wanna make sure that I'm not a bumbling idiot from the standpoint of driving, I may be a bumbling idiot, but I can still drive, okay? So it's, it's kind of an issue right here where, where we all have been impacted by this. I commiserate with the tax office over there, but. Jerry, let me ask a quick question, was there any thought given to maybe dishandling, and I hate to, I hate to bring this up, because it's got, I know, I think I know what the answer's gonna be, opening an additional day a week, like on Saturdays, to handle some of this backlog? Just restricting it to certain.
It's not the one that's backlog, it's gonna be future. Remember, August first, we're gonna take on a whole new program that we're not ready for, and that's our web dealer. And we need to have steps in place for someone to actually start working that, and that's gonna be a pretty much majority of the day position for them to do it. And that's just one thing, and if you look at the stats on here, our numbers have been going up every year, we've been taking on more vehicle registration, we've been taking on more titling, we've been taking on more um, property taxes, more sales in this county, so there's more in the backside of the property taxes also. More reports, more tax certs, more this, more that, and we don't have this, we're getting backlog just every day, it's not, had nothing to do with being closed, because we've been working, and if you look at the stats also, we got hit with almost a hundred people a day, just the days we've been open. So we're, we're, the people are still coming.
I, I had a, I made a mistake in, in talking to Anna the other day and asking her if they really needed this position, and an hour and a half later, I was convinced that they did. I, I, you know, we, we know, I think the commissioners probably know pretty much what goes on in the county tax office as a whole, but specifically, I was just amazed at the intricacy of the details and the fact that they just can't get it wrong. And with that, if the discussion has ended, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion made. I'd make a second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mine's a no, I think we should stay within the budget.
Okay.
And I also like to reach out to our commissioners if I got one more question or not question comment. I invite any of you or all of you to come over here and spend a day with us. Just so you can be on the same page once, and know what we do on a daily, the back part of it, the front part of it, just come on over anytime you want, we welcome you.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded and voted on, it's four, five, one against.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, and may I?
Discuss, approve, disapprove, resolution, R twenty, R ten, twenty twenty, a resolution amended authorized representatives, representatives for the tax, tax pool investment.
What are the changes?
Come on up, any changes?
This particular investment pool, if you do make any changes in users, deleting or adding, they do require a resolution, and so I'm putting two more of my people in my office so that they can go online and access the funds.
Okay.
Or view the funds.
All right.
Move to approve.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item eighteen, discuss, approve, disapprove, budget line item transfers, we know that one.
We have none.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable, payroll and payroll liabilities.
They are all normal this, this time.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. As time for any elected official or department head to have anything that need to bring up, bring it up, we don't have many department heads in here or any elected, well, yeah, anything, anybody. Okay, does uh, does anybody wanna say anything? Okay. All right, we have nothing to go into closed session about, so I, I have a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Judge.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, have a good day.